Council members Friedman.
Here.
Manukian.
Here.
Darian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here.
And we have your report. Agenda for the May 29, 2012 special meeting of the City Council is posted on Thursday, May 24, 2012, on the Bulletin Board outside City Hall. Before you today is a public hearing Director of Community Development regarding Stage One Design Review for the proposed brand Wilson Project formerly known as City Center Two Project to be located at 124 West Wilson Avenue. When is a motion approving Stage One Design Review subject to comments and conditions of approval? Mr. Ochoa.
Yes. I have a very exciting and unique project to bring before you. As you know, this particular piece of property at the southwest corner of Wilson and Brand has sat fallow for the better part of two decades, maybe a little bit beyond that. Certainly, it is in the heart of the downtown district, and though we have envisioned a variety of different uses over the years, we have for you at this point a project that looks very attractive and meets a lot of the use goals that we have, the land use goals for this site. And so, at this point, Roger's going to provide you. Roger, yes?
Correct.
Still learning the names. We'll provide you the staff report presentation.
All right.
Let me just quickly ask a question, make a point. This basically conforms with all of the codes, the city strategic plan, et cetera, et cetera. We're not talking about variances or...
Correct. It's the applicant's intent to develop the project per the development standards of the DSP.
Mr. Mayor, I might remind you to open the public here. Chance to open the public hearing.
Open the public hearing. Ready? All right. Good afternoon, Mayor Quintero and members of the City Council. Again, my name is Roger Kiesel with the Planning Department. The Holland Partner Group is proposing a mixed-use development called Brandon and Wilson. It's located at the southwest corner of Brand Boulevard and Wilson Avenue, and as the city manager said, it's a 60,000 square foot vacant parcel in the downtown area. The applicant will be proposing a project compliant with the DSP development standards, the downtown specific plan development standards. The project will contain 238 residential rental units and 10,000 square feet of commercial space. The project will be six stories and approximately 90 feet in height. 388 parking spaces are proposed on the site and will be accessed from driveways both on Wilson Avenue as well as Orange Street. Staff recommends approval of the Stage One Submittal with a direction to further refine the project consistent with the principal urban designer's conditions and comments contained in the staff report and the attachments. At this point, I'll turn over the microphone to Tom Warren of the Holland Group, and he'll further detail the project.
We'll need your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Tom Warren. I'm with the Holland Partner Group. I run our Southern California region. And the Holland Partner Group is a residential development group. We work in mixed-use communities up and down the west coast. We have offices in Seattle, Portland, Denver, and Southern California. We focus on building mixed-use communities in walkable urban locations. Pick our spots very carefully because we feel like the renters in our markets are looking for that kind of experience. We're really excited about building here in downtown Glendale. Glendale's a wonderful city. Whenever I come up here, I enjoy the topography and the diversity of the buildings. Obviously, it's been built over a long period of time, and the appearance and community reflects that. It's a very rich fabric to be using as backdrop for our development. I think, you know, what's exciting about Glendale is the downtown and the fact that you guys now have a very vibrant retail core. It's currently separated from the downtown by a vacant lot, which I walked by today and was noticing how the grass was turning brown and, you know, kind of getting a little drier as the season wears on. We're looking to fill that spot. The prior project was a two-tower condo mixed-use development, high-rises over 18 stories. We are not doing that project. What we're doing is a six-story mixed-use building with about 240 units and 10,000 square feet of retail, restaurant, commercial space. Seldom have we had the opportunity to build in such an exciting location. We look for sites all over the west coast that have these attributes, and this one is clearly a unique opportunity. We're working with our marketing folks to tailor this design for the residents that we want to attract. The residents, we think, want to live in downtown Glendale and for a restaurant that we think could really fill this void between mid-brand and the retail that is so exciting and vibrant right now. We've reached out to the neighbors, and Legacy in particular, who owns City Center One, they're very excited to see this land developed. They want to cooperate with us to make sure that the complexities of building in urban locations with property lines and just... It's always hard when you don't control all of the site to do exactly what you want, but Legacy has expressed a willingness to work with us to make sure that the plaza and the space between the two buildings is worked out for the best for the community. So I do want to reiterate that our intent is to meet your code. I think there's a small math error in the calculations that we submitted, and we will meet code for the open space in particular, and the building we're delivering is right in line with your specific plan. We've enjoyed working with your staff and are looking forward to presenting this project to you. What I'd like to do is introduce Mike Labarre, who is with Carrier Johnson, an architect we've worked in the past, worked with in the past, and we think that they've come up with a very exciting design. So I'll turn it over to Mike.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here today and talk briefly about design, which is, I think, very exciting for you folks today. I'm going to speak a little bit about urban design and architecture, and then we'll have an opportunity for questions and answers. I'm also going to speak today about color, which I think is an important topic that we've gotten feedback on over the last couple of weeks. Tom oriented you earlier to the site, don't need to repeat that. Where I wanted to start today was with this slide right here, which was, as urban designers, urban planners, and architects, was significant to us. The Security Trust and Bank Building is one of the older landmarks in the city, and then is right across the street from a newer building, the former Borders Books space. And that, I think, epitomizes the eclectic nature of downtown Glendale, and even more recently reinforced with the development of Americana. Even though Americana, for example, was designed with traditional architecture in mind, it also incorporates some very contemporary components within it, and I think it's the combination of the two that make it interesting and vibrant, and that's what we hope to accomplish in this transitional area from the mid-brand location to the north. But the building on the left has what we call a traditional three-part component to it, a base, a middle, and a top, and we're going to recall that as we go through these slides. The next slide here is of the existing site. You can see Center City One on the left, and some people have had opinions and consternation, frankly, about the outside escalator and how it might be incorporated into the future. We think it's something that is to be embraced and have incorporated really into the composition of our overall design, which we find very appealing and positive. One of our major objectives with this project was to complete the plaza, complete the circular notion of the plaza established with Center City One, and we think that we've done that successfully. We've incorporated that notion of base, middle, and top, as I referred to just a moment ago, with a dramatic arcade at the base of the building that allows for retail and restaurant uses, engaging signage, cafe seating, and other amenities oriented to the plaza as well as along Brand Street. Now, also within the downtown specific plan, it identifies this location as a landmark location. It is indeed a very central, important location, and as such, we've taken it seriously in developing architecture that is worthy of that. So we're, on one hand, wanting to be complimentary and harmonious with Center City One, but also our own identity at the same time, and we accomplish that with the arcade at the base that is reflective of the retail and restaurant uses, the middle, which is reflective of the apartment residential uses, and then at the top of the building, the penthouses that are two stories in volume that crown the building and give it its unique character. This view along Wilson is another view and is really the transition from the more commercial corner at Brandon Wilson to the more residential character on the west side of Wilson and ultimately to Orange. Our resident lobby and leasing office is located right here, which is a logical transition from the retail or restaurant uses, and at the entrance into our parking garage off of Wilson. And then the balance of the block on the ground level are residential townhomes. We have an interesting courtyard that opens up in this location here and has vistas to the north. At the corner of Orange and Wilson, also in response to context and the downtown specific plan, also noting this is an important future corner in the community, we've provided a pocket park at the base of the building here, and another expression of architecture at the top while also incorporating balcony treatment for the residents. I noted in the staff report that one of the comments about the architecture that they'd like to work with us further on is the variety of materials, and I wanted to mention to you today, beyond plaster, all of these balconies that you see in the project on the various sides are metal. So we do, at staff's suggestion and encouragement, have incorporated additional materials. If we could dim the lights maybe just a little bit, I noticed earlier the projector was tending to burn out some of the colors, so this may be a little bit difficult to read. I know you have it in your packets, so I'll refer to it, but the entry is off of Wilson for the residents and the 10,000 square foot retail and restaurant on the corner. Parking is in a structured parking in the middle here, and within that parking, we provide for charging stations, a Zipcar location, parking for retail and restaurant patrons as well as the residents. Here's that pocket park on the corner of Orange and Wilson I referred to earlier. Now, as you transition up in height, we have two courtyards that help us comply with the open space requirement and also provide amenities for the residents on-site. We have a pool area over here adjacent to our recreation and clubhouse facilities for the residents on-site. This courtyard is one which is intended to be more active for the residents, and the second courtyard, the one that orients to the northern vistas, is a more passive courtyard. So there are two different experiences for the residents on-site. And then thirdly, up on the roof, we have a green roof that finalizes the open space requirement with two outdoor terrace areas and a decorative landscape pattern so that not only do the residents get to experience this landscape treatment and open space treatment, but those in the adjacent office building that look down on it will also appreciate this. It's an opportunity to design something interesting in the landscape, not just a single plant palette or pattern. It's intended to be varied, and we look forward to working with staff during the next phase of landscape design development. Now, next, I wanted to talk about color, and in doing so, I'm going to ask the clerk to pass these around to you. While he's doing that, I'm going to describe the topic here. Our original submission on May 1 had what I'll call brighter colors. Let's call them a little more charismatic. And since then, we had modified the colors that are reflected in your packet today, which are a little more subtle. Let's call it a little more sophisticated. Now, over the last 10 days or so, we've received a lot of feedback about color. Color is a very subjective thing. Everybody sees color a little bit differently. Even today, looking at this screen, it's very different from what's in your packet. So when we talk about color, everybody sees it a little bit differently. But suffice to say that there are differences of opinion. Should we be a little bit more bright, or should we be a little bit more subtle? In our opinion, as the architects, we're really trying to reemphasize the massing of the building, the notion of base, middle, and top, and then use color to accent certain features at strategic corners, for example, to further emphasize the significance of that. So you can see here, this is the current design, which is in your packet. That's the original design. And then today, a minor change that as the architect and urban planners, we'd like to propose to you, this is what we recommend, is a hybrid of the two ideas. Basically, the packet that you see today with the addition of strategic color, one color only, in those locations shown here. If I go around the corner, this is the original color scheme. This is the current scheme in your packet. This is the modified version today, which I know you hadn't seen. So what I just circulated to you as a handout is the version that I'm presenting to you today. It is the combination of the two, if you will.
Can you show where the differences are because I...
Yes.
At that elevation, I see that there's something on the Orange Street side, but I can't see what it is.
It is...
I know before it was...
It's a little subtle.
Show us each place between the original... Not between the proposal today, but between the original proposal and what you're proposing now.
Sure.
Go through it.
Okay. So this base color here of the arcade, let's call it off-white, remains unchanged throughout all the schemes. This color here, this warm gray or warm charcoal color, remains unchanged. And similarly, the top. What changes are these accent colors here, here, these inserts in these balcony areas, this green, for example, over here on Wilson, this color in here. So that's the one in your packet, and this is the one we're proposing today. So the change that we're proposing today adds back color here, here, and in these inserts. So if I were to turn the corner, you see them...
Adds the same color back as the first one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And then in these balcony areas, it's blue, but it's a little hard to see in this particular version of it because it's in shadow, but it is a fairly bright blue, consistent with some of the intensity of the original colors, but in blue. Now, if I go around the corner, this is the night shot, so it's a little bit difficult to perceive color at night, but you see the orange, for example, at the corner here...
This is the original one?
This is the original one. This is the very original one with the green element here, orange here, and varied colors inserted, sprinkled into the balconies. This is the current version that's in your packet. This is the night version of what we're proposing today. So the orange is added back, an orange leg added here, for example. Now, this is the original design at Orange and Wilson with, you can see the green, and a decidedly different top here and color accents sprinkled in the patterning. This is the design that's in your packet today with the modified top, and working with staff on this modification. But this is the color scheme that is the hybrid of all of that today. So let me go back, toggle back and forth. That's today. Then we added orange back into here, and at the base here, I think this is significant. It's almost sculptural in its appeal now at that pocket park.
And can you go back to the original?
Mm-hmm. That's the original with the green. Orange was always envisioned, as was other accent colors.
So is that top and bottom now on the same plane?
This piece right here?
No, above, the top part.
Right here?
The middle part, because it was protruding in the original, right?
Yes, let me...
Now it's on the same plane?
Let me... No, it recedes. I'll explain that. That's a good observation. This was overhanging here, so as not to be in the same plane. In this version, although it's a little difficult to see, it meets flush at the corner, like a knife edge, but as it recedes down orange, it pulls away from the facade and is offset from the street wall by this much right here. So it's at an angle. That's the angle of it right there. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have, Tom or I, about the design. That concludes my presentation about color and the overall design intent. We appreciate the staff comments. Might mention that the one condition that staff identified as the open space requirement calculation, I think, is really nothing more than maybe a mathematical error or a typo. Obviously, out of some 39,000 square feet of open space requirement, we're 600 square feet off. It was not our intent to have it be anything other than fully compliant.
And that area would be met with the roof gardens, and so it isn't as though you're losing units or anything, they just extend those areas?
That's exactly right. Thank you.
Questions, comments, observations?
Yes. Can I see the Wilson elevation again?
The night version?
Night is fine, yeah.
Because I can go to the actual elevations if you would like.
Okay. So what are you doing in that intersection there? That's not a road.
So this...
It's an alley. Little mistake was made.
You had me going for like half an hour trying to figure out, are you crossing, are you incorporating this to the fabric site, and is that a pass-through?
It's the alley coming down.
So in working with city traffic engineer, this is an existing alley, and it is desirous of the city traffic engineer to have our driveway entrance align with the alley.
It just looks like...
And we do that.
Understand that?
It looks like the street, but it is not.
But it is misleading.
It's a little misleading because obviously we can't show the existing buildings that it would be here otherwise.
Right, got it. Okay. That was my first item, but I'll sit tight for a while.
I didn't... Going, we have plenty of things to talk about, don't we?
Well, I like the original designs. I mean, you don't have enough orange on there. I don't know why I like orange. I just painted...
You like the original color scheme?
Yes, I just painted my room orange, so... And I don't know why you're doing away with the green, and I think the green looked much better in the middle, because I'm uniquely qualified to discuss design of buildings.
All he had to do is look at his office, choice of colors.
Bright orange.
I, you know, it looks fine. It just, color schemes are, you know, color schemes. I don't like the charcoal. It just looks dark and dreary to me. Other than that, you know, maybe you should do the whole building in orange and have charcoal highlights or something of that sort. So it looks fine. Are you asking for any variances or any...
We are not.
Any, what are you asking from the city, just approval of the design at this point?
Today, we are asking for, as the staff recommendation, we are asking for approval, Stage One approval, recognizing...
You mean all the codes and parking and...
That's correct. That's correct. And we would like to move forward with a decision about color, and hence our recommendation today is the scheme that you see before you right now, recognizing that there are varied opinions about color.
Okay, well, before, let me weigh in before he persuades...
Do you have cards?
Yeah. But I want to talk to the architect first, and then we'll, before he persuades the rest of the council to go with an orange building, let me get my comments in.
I'll go with a green building.
Well, let me start by saying, yes, it has been 20-plus years, only it seems like 40 years that lot has been empty right in the middle of the downtown. And for 20-plus years, I've brought people down Brand Boulevard and I've sort of directed their attention as I go south on Brand to the left so that that ugly-looking corner doesn't sort of register in their mind. So I'm all for the project. I think this is the best thing that we've seen in a long, long time. There've been a lot of reiterations and possibilities, five-star hotels and everything else, none of which came to fruition, none of which helped. And this is a solid proposal. I like the 240 units. It's going to be just tremendous for the existing restaurant owners and everyone else, all the small merchants within this surrounding neighborhoods, I think, are going to really be impacted by the tenants of this building. I also like the idea of one big square foot, one commercial pad, that hopefully you will be able to bring in a good-size restaurant. And of course, I'm very happy you're going to have the charge stations, and even more importantly, the Zipcar, which I think is going to be quite successful. For those that don't know, Zipcar is a situation where you'll pay a yearly fee, and then in essence, you have a, quote, "rental car" at your disposal, and so the people who reside here, who knows? They may not necessarily, if it's a couple, they may not need two cars. They may be able to get by with one and the Zipcar. And in addition to Zipcar, there's other people, other companies entering the fray. I read that General Motors is going to begin to compete with Zipcars for that market. The design itself, I like the way it addresses the courtyard next to the escalators. I think it really does a great job there. Restaurant, I think, will do real well at that space, and then, of course, the tenants being able to come and go. The corner of Brandon Wilson is well done. I like the way the addressed of Brandon Wilson, that horizontal lettering, I think's very good. I'm just very happy with the overall design of the building. In terms of the... Well, and I'm also very happy, the mid-block entry for cars, I think that's just perfect during rush hour.
Brandon, yeah.
Going to kind of work real, work real well. In terms of the colors, to tell you the truth, I like your final, your final sort of color choice. I think that's a good combo. It's going to take me a while to get used to that orange V when all the others are white, but since it does sort of work into your public space there, your kind of micro park, maybe that's a good way to kind of set it off, to let the public know that it's also their space. But anyway, overall, I'm happy with the colors. I think the last one would be my first choice, other than the building not being all orange. Oh, you know, whatever the majority of the council goes for, I'll be there on color choice. Next, Ms. Friedman.
Well, since we're talking about color, you know, I was thinking back... You can sit down if you want, unless we have a question. I was thinking back to when we did the branding study, and what a lot of that study was, was a very large report where the consultants went out and talked to people all over the Southland and outside of it about their impressions of Glendale. And one of the comments that came back a lot was that Glendale was boring, Glendale was vanilla, and when I'm looking at your... And when I'm looking at your current proposal, love the building, love the massing, but to me, the color, which is various shades of beige, fit right into that impression, which by the way, is a negative impression, not a positive impression, that people have. And on Brand, we have a, a street that's actually, I think, very visually dynamic, as the architect said. It's got a lot of different types of architectures, it has a lot of color. We're bringing, hopefully, the Museum of Neon Art, which will bring a lot of light, because those signs are supposed to not just stay in the museum, but actually go along the median, different places along Brand Boulevard. So I think we need a building that stands up to all of that, and that announces itself. And as the report said, this location is supposed to be a landmark location, and to me, a landmark location should be visually interesting. So I was disappointed to go from the original submission, which I quite liked, to this submission. I'm glad to see this hybrid, because at least it brings back some of that color and that visual excitement. I also do like what you've done with the orange and central feature on the top, where now it's recessed instead of jutting out. I think it's very streamlined, it's more elegant, it takes away a lot of the feeling of mass on that side. So the only thing about the new proposal, color proposal, and I hate to get into color because it just feels like so much micromanaging, you know, especially to architects who are well-trained in this, is I do miss, if not a popping green, some sort of color in that central elevation, because to me, it separates those three sections and really makes it feel almost like three, you know, makes it feel like three sections as opposed to one giant building. And I think that what you've done here, and it's really hard to see what color it is, I assume it's like a brown or gray. If the green is too much for people on the council, I think, you know, maybe we should talk with, or staff can talk about something that tones it down somewhat, but still is a color. Because I think when you stand on Brand, you want to look down that orange, that, that street, that Wilson Street, and think, boy, that's interesting, maybe I'll walk down and see what that is, but there's something going on down there, there's something colorful and alive and dynamic. And we lose that with the current proposal. And I think it's very important to have something bright down there to attract people. So whether the balcony inserts are orange or blue doesn't really matter much to me, I think they're both nice. I'm glad to have some of the color back, but I think that that part that had been formerly green should be, from the latest proposal, should be reconsidered. If green's too much, if it's too mind-blowing, too far away from the beige that we've come to expect from Glendale, then maybe there can be a compromised color in there. But I, or, Mr. Menucha is obsessed with orange, as is my husband, I might say. What is it with men and orange? And I agree with Mr. Menucha in that if I had my preference, if I had to vote, I'd pick the first one, the original proposal, because I think it's the most fun. So I would vote number one, but accept number three, but I really don't like number two. So those are my feelings. And but, but number one with that modified top on that one elevation, because I, I think it's a much more elegant solution than what you had before. But I'm really glad to see the project, it's a really nice building. It's not too huge, it's kind of a nice size, and I think it's going to be a lot nicer than the current empty lot. And hopefully, we can activate the space that's between those two buildings. I know it's more in the other building's footprint, but I know that you've talked about working with the property owners there and doing something. I think that that space desperately needs some greening, some shade. Right now, it's, it's so barren and so hot and so un-hospitable that it's just not an inviting space. So if we could, if there's any way of doing something there, I'm just saying publicly, if the owners of that property are listening, I think it would behoove you and make your building more pleasant and, and more attractive to people. Thank you.
Mr. Najarian, followed by Mr. Weaver.
I, I like the current color scheme, and I didn't like the very first version. I thought it was too bright. I thought it was too much an attempt to draw attention, to say, look at me, look at me, I'm here, I'm here. You've got a very visually distinct architecture. You don't need flashy color to make it happen. It's like me, wearing this gray suit, it needs to pop a little bit, so that's why you wear a brighter tie. Now, if I was wearing a, you know, a wild zoot suit or a double-breasted with wide collars, I would want to tone that down with a more subdued tie. I think combining the contemporary styling with the flashy colors is a little too much, in my opinion. I do like, though, bringing back a little bit of the accent, as you have in this regard. I think people are going to notice this building. I don't think they're going to miss it by any means, driving down. I mean, the, so much of it is unlike anything we've seen in this city before, the treatment in the arcade, the penthouse treatment, the balconies that are sticking out, the, the interface of the glass, the angles, the street names on there. So it's a, I think it's a bold building. I think putting too much of a bright color is going to just be too much on that, but, but I do like it the way it is.
The way it is being, the one that's in the pocket or the newest one?
This is, this is the three with the, with adding the-
Thank you.
The splash at the top and basically at the top corners there.
Mr. Weaver.
Like to hear from the public first, or make my comments? Do you have cards, right?
Yeah, yeah, I have.
Thank you.
Right. We have Herbert Milano.
That's a winner.
Followed by Aram Kazazi. Richard Espiritu.
Thank you, Mr. Quintero, members of the city council and staff. My name is Herbert Milano. I think you, you touched upon a very visually attractive architecture for downtown. I've particularly liked to see something similar to this come up. It kind of reminds me of Santa Monica. There is a, a lot of ingenuity in this that Glendale needs, but obviously, I'm not coming here to, to second everything that you're saying with regard to, I want to bring attention to something kind of interesting. The, the idea that all of these buildings are going to somehow add to, to good urban design and urban planning, I'm continuing to be concerned about the open space element. And I know that even though there's an impact fee on all of these units, I'm still concerned about the fact that, you know, given Glendale's statistics, that we should expect about 140 children in this building, and wonder what we are doing with regard to addressing the needs of those, because I don't think, within the building itself, we should expect that those amenities be provided. Passive parks, unnecessary places for people to, to pass the time with their children, grandparents, and so forth, I think is still necessary. Places for youth to attend events and so forth is needed. And the interesting part is that I was reading the documents, that this gentleman comes from Vancouver, Washington, and there's a park right as you cross the river, Estor Short Park, which is right adjacent to the city hall. And in a way, so incredibly similar is one of the parks that I brought to your attention as to what we could do with Central Park, which is the largest park closest to this particular building. I am concerned, obviously, about the availability of the type of open space that would invite grandparents and adults and children to take part of festivities and so forth. And so I, in light of this particular project, I ask again that the city council plan about taking those parking spaces that today reside on top of Central Park and move them underground or move them someplace else, so that you can increase the amount of open space that children and adults and seniors need in this incredibly dense part of downtown. I'd also like to ask that if there's some big consideration with regard to the egress and the, basically the entry and exit of, onto Wilson, because if we eventually are going to have bicyclists riding Wilson Boulevard, might be the one street that you may want only one, one car and with perhaps on the side with bicycle lanes. And so if there's going to be egress and egress from Wilson, you might want to consider suggesting maybe entry only on, on Wilson and exit only on, on, on orange, to make less congestion and basically a little bit more friendly towards bicycles. Thank you very much.
Aram Kazazi, followed by Richard Espiritu.
Aram Kazazi, I came over here again that we have a parking shortage. This particular building, my advertising says 243 parking space, units over here, and then other notices 238, so there's a five-unit discrepancy. I don't know what that is, but the notice doesn't match. Now, if, if you go to 243 units times two parking spaces required, that's 486 spaces. You have a guest, the space of 49, that's 535 spaces. You have a commercial space, or a restaurant space, or approximately 60 spaces, or 50 maybe. So that gives you almost 600 spaces required. So this one does need a variance, because you're only providing 249 parking spaces for 243 units, that leaves you six guest spaces instead of 49. The 142 tandem spaces are really not counted unless you're going to give a variance for that again, but the commercial space and restaurant space has zero parking space. So this, again, needs a variance. I don't know where they're getting, does or need it. Now, it comes to open space for ground, there's hardly any landscaped space from the outside of this particular project. You cannot see anything outside. Is inside, yes, there is, on the roof, there is. But there is only about, I saw like three pots or four pots with few flowers, the palm trees that are already existing from the adjacent building, which has nothing to do with this one, they're showing all over the place, but, so it doesn't have it. I mean, the design, it's up to you, I'm not thrilled with it. I would have rather seen the Americana type of design, bring it over here, I think would have been more appropriate to match it, but I like the design better. I always said that with Americana design was very nice, but that's up to you guys. But the parking is a problem, that's why we do need a complete full environmental impact report on all three projects to, I know you're not happy with it, but I got no choice, you know, to say it, because that's what I feel on it, you do need it, I know I'm not going to get it here, so thank you very much. I just want to put on record.
Okay, thank you. Richard Espiritu.
Whose papers are these?
Counsel, staff, and audience, I am Richard Espiritu, speaking on behalf of Vanguard Inc., a nonprofit organization that operates as a physical watchdog, and in this case, for the city of Glendale. The city has a campaign finance reform ordinance that requires a full disclosure of the identities of 10% owners of entities doing business with the city. In the case of Exhibit Three, the names and individuals who are owners of Brand and Wilson Investment LP and 111 North Brand LLC are not disclosed. Those interests must be disclosed. At the same time, the city should disclose that former mayor John Drayman solicited $100,000 loan from the developer and a political consultant where there were, there was business pending before the agency. Loan was made by an intermediary whose action before the city of Los Angeles Criminal Grand Jury in April resulted in 28 counts, charges of, to Mr. Drayman. Those counts involve loan and other felony violations of the Political Reform Act. Disclosure should be obeyed both ways. Vanguard Inc. is watching. Join us at our community forum Thursday.
Hey, hey.
Thank you, thank you.
No nexus there.
Thank you.
Are there any issues with the ownership of this?
I'd have to turn to staff, but I don't believe all, all the disclosures are on the forum, including the current property owner, their, the LLC or-
Exhibit Three?
Yeah, Exhibit Three is all, it's all disclosed.
Okay. I have actually another card. Henry Amar.
Hello, I'm, I live in Glendale, Buenos Aires in Glendale. I'm a student at USC, and we just came to observe-
Yeah, you need your name to-
Oh, Henry Amar, A-M-M-A-R. And I just wanted to voice my opinion, and I'm just excited about a project like this. I was born in Glendale, and as you said, it's just been, just grass this whole time. And I think when you go to the, like Glendale now, you go to the Americana, and it's really alive and bright, but when you go down Brand, even the Alex Theater, it's a great theater, but it's almost dead, and it's almost seems like, as a younger, sort of younger person, you don't really go down Brand, you go, you can go to Portos, you can go to like Destinations, but I think it'd be great to bring something like that, to kind of try to bring Brand alive and have, I guess, people want to go down Brand even more and make it more connected to the Americana. I know Bloomingdale's is coming, but I just wanted to voice my opinion. I'm excited for the project, and I think it's a great thing for the city, I really do, and born and raised here, it'd be great, so just wanted to-
You're part owner of the project?
No, no, but I'm a real estate student at USC, so maybe one day-
You go to USC, huh?
Yeah.
Do you subscribe, would you subscribe to Zipcar?
A Zipcar? And I know they have it at USC, I'm not too familiar with what it is, and is it-
Just kidding, no, I'm just kidding. No, it's a good deal, actually, it's a great deal. It started on college campuses, actually.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. The next speaker is Edlin Yosefi. And your name for the record.
Hi, my name's Edlin Yosefi, and I'm also a student at USC with Henry.
Right on, right on.
Right on. I just wanted to give some of my input. I do think that, right now, when we look at Brand Boulevard, the excitement is located near the Americana, but when you look down the corridor on the other side, there's really nothing there. So I definitely think that the design of the building, especially with the colors, is really exciting, and it's what we need. When I looked at the initial design, the first thing that I thought as well was Santa Monica. Santa Monica's like an exciting city, but when people think of Glendale, I agree with you, they don't really think of exciting. So I definitely think we should keep the colors, and as Ms. Friedman said, maybe if the orange is too bright or the green, we could go with a little purple, because it would blend in with the gray tones-
Bright purple.
Bright purple, lavender, maybe, but definitely-
Cardinal and gold.
Or cardinal and gold, that's right. So I really like the accents, we should keep the accents and draw attention to the other side of Brands, so definitely, I really like the design, and I'm really excited about it, and right on.
Thank you very much. Eric Sinanian.
That is another Trojan.
Is this like a school project, you guys?
I had nothing to do with this.
Hi, I'm Eric Sinanian. I'm actually not a USC student, I'm a Humboldt State student, but I'm a resident of Glendale as well, so I just wanted to agree with them too, and I, I like the idea as well, I like the color, and I think it'll shift a lot of attention down the street, down Brand. And I just had a question about like, I don't know if this relates to the design aspect, but just the environmental considerations of the building, because I know that Glendale's trying to strive to be more environmentally aware, and I think as we build new buildings, we can take that into consideration. So that was just like a question or thought, if you guys could keep that in mind, maybe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the input, for the unsolicited input from the younger public residing here in the city. Ms. Friedman, you had a, well, make a comment.
So a question for the architect, are there any sustainable elements incorporated into the building's design?
Definitely, in addition to the charging stations and the Zipcar, of course, Glendale also has, as you well know, your own green code, which is equivalent and beyond California's now adopted green code, so there's numerous components to the building that are incorporating green standards today and lead equivalent standards today, so that's fundamental to the project, absolutely.
And then are you including bike parking inside?
Or 84 bark, bike parking spaces on site as well.
And have you considered, there was one speaker suggested Wilson being one type of egress, and I think it was the alley being another type, have you looked into anything like?
We actually have two means of egress, one off of Wilson, one off of Orange. We anticipate, the way the garage is organized and laid out, that the vast majority of the residents will actually enter in off of Orange, and that the Wilson entrance will be used predominantly for those people coming to the site, maybe as guests or as prospective tenants headed to the lobby and leasing office. But actually, the majority, we anticipate to come in and out off of Orange.
Okay.
That's just how the garage is engineered?
Yes, in terms, if you look at the circulation of the, of the garage levels, when you come in off of Wilson, you actually go up slightly- of Wilson, you actually go up slightly to access that level. If you come in off of Orange, you go down slightly. They're obviously interconnected inside, but the majority of the assigned parking spaces for residents will be on the lower levels that are more directly accessed off of Orange.
Okay, thank you.
Mike did a good job, but the residents in these buildings don't want to have to deal with the people coming and going for retail. They tend to be looking for a spot, not familiar with the building, so we've provided a separate, the Orange Street access goes straight in, straight to the residential, the majority of residential parking, which is underground. They can get there from going in Wilson, but they have to wind down to retail levels. Most of them will use Orange, so almost all the traffic. But we did design the Wilson address, Wilson access, so that it's easy for the retail customers and for our future residents to find parking and get in and out. It's critical. A lot of things we've done in this building are to attract the right restaurant, and it's important that the building be designed right for them, so we've worked very hard on that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, I have a question for Ms. Van Miden. I'm assuming that Mr. Kazaziyan is incorrect that this building needs a variance for parking, without getting into a whole long explanation, if you can just confirm that?
Yes, members of the City Council.
I'm not sure if it would actually be a question for you or for planning staff.
Probably better for planning, but two components of that. One is the planning component, but also is the environmental component, and that is that CEQA no longer requires an analysis of parking specific or separate from, or at all, related to the environmental impacts of the building. This building was previously analyzed under an EIR and is being reexamined. It's actually a smaller building with less impact, as currently proposed, but that comes with a stage two design.
And to answer your question, Ms. Friedman, no variance will be required. In terms of the discrepancy between the numbers that Mr. Kazaziyan pointed out, the number, the accurate number is the one that's in your staff report, which is over 300 parking spaces, and no variance will be required or parking reduction at any.
So maybe staff can just explain to him why he was incorrect, and that's, we understand. Okay, thank you.
And there will be an environmental document.
There is an environmental document, and there will be an addendum to the environmental document, yes.
Mr. Weaver.
Okay, this is stage one. We'll see it at stage two. I like the first cut, pretty good articulation in the building. Colors I usually leave up to the architects to worry about, that's their business. So that part is okay. I recognize the parking, that the tenants were going to use Orange Street, no difference in the Americana, you bring them in at separate locations. Beyond that, I didn't study the inside that much, because as I told Holland Partners and Mr. Rodney Kahn, I will not support this, and I would like to explain the reasons why. Back in the 1940s, as a youngster, always shocked, my parents took me to Webb's Department Store that was on this corner, and all my growing up years, the main department store was Webb's, and finally, it burned down, I don't know, in the 70s or whatever. Broadway and Brand, Security Pacific, is the building that was shown in the picture. Bank of America was on the corner where Bloomingdale's is going in, and that was the center of Glendale. Brand and Broadway, and there was a drugstore where BJ's is now. It was never at Wilson and Brand. A few years ago, 2006, we adopted this downtown-specific plan. I distinctly remember that what we wanted was a hotel on this site. I understand that hotels go in and out, so do apartments and condos, and we're now sitting at a place in this economy where people are being foreclosed on their houses and having to move out into the streets. They're moving into apartments now, they're moving into condos now. So the market for condos and apartments is very real. My viewpoint has been that residential does not belong on Brand. We're building 300 and some over on Orange, the Luxe, I think it's called, and then the Joann Fabric apartment condos, which I support. We're building the lofts over on Maryland and Broadway, which I supported, and I supported all the residential developments along Broadway, but not on the street, not on Brand and Wilson. This plan developed, right in here it says, in this one block between Broadway and Wilson off of Brand, is to be 16 to 20 stories tall, specifically because we wanted a hotel there. Talking with businesspeople in this city, they have continually told me what this city needs is a first-class hotel. We don't have one. I went to an event Saturday, I had to go down to the Sheraton Hotel in Los Angeles, because there wasn't a banquet space large enough in the city of Glendale. For the third-largest city in this county, we don't have such a thing. So, and north of this, right across the street there, land use that we put in, two stories. We deliberately thought this out, high-rise hotel here, two-story north of that. Now, because hotels are not in, oh, let's just put anything in. For me, not in my city, I disagree with my colleagues. We wait, hotels will come back in, sure as shooting, they're going to build them in downtown LA, there's going to be other places. First-class hotel there will do more than anything else. The condos and stuff off of Orange, off of Maryland, plenty of room to do that. If we don't build that hotel in that location, you tell me in the future where in downtown Glendale you would put such a hotel. There is no other space. I cannot support it. I like what I said at the beginning, it's a nice start on the stage one. It doesn't belong there. I've told them that before. I don't care to debate that with my colleagues, that's in my own personal opinion. I will not support it. You know that, Rodney. Thank you.
Okay.
I just forgot to thank the USC students for coming up to speak.
Hurry.
Thank you. I had actually asked somebody to ask your opinion, because I was just curious to see what younger people, not that you're really that much younger than me, but what slightly younger people thought of the design. So, you know, we are the people that we're building for, you're the people that are the prospective tenants who, you know, at some point will hopefully move into Glendale, or if you're not already here, and it's nice to know that this building appeals to you. So, thank you very much for getting up and speaking, and I hope that you come back.
Mr. Manukian.
I was going to make this comment before Mr. Weaver made the comments that he just made, and this is in no way to rebut what Mr. Weaver said, but I am pleased to see that the buildings are not two 18-story towers, which I voted against.
I know you did.
Yeah, which I voted against.
You voted against his plan.
Yes, yes, and I voted against that plan. So it's, I'm pleased to see that the economy is supporting not just this project, but most of the projects that are coming to fruition at this point, they're in the six-story range, which I prefer. In general, and I've made that public before, it's not in no way a reflection to what Mr. Weaver said.
I understand.
So I, with that, I will make the motion to go ahead, move with this, and of course, the color scheme is, you know, whatever, whatever the design is.
Well, yeah, we might as well narrow it down in terms of your motion. Are you happy with the third reiteration?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, with the third design.
Would you, can I suggest a friendly amendment?
Sure.
Which is to allow that portion that was once green, for them to play around with that color, to bring some color back into that.
Absolutely, absolutely, and I agree with your comment, that it kind of separates the buildings and the green kind of.
Okay, I will second.
I'm going to close a public hearing before we.
Yeah, I will second the motion.
So a first and a second. Any comments on the motion?
Just so I'm clear, that the motion now includes that green face to it?
No.
No.
Well, it's to.
What was it that you?
The third.
It was to.
And final reiteration.
For them to play around with that color, to bring some color into there, even if it's not the green, but to have some.
Middle, in the middle.
In that middle, that one middle section, because right now, it lacks, you know, differentiation from the rest of that very long elevation, so.
We want that to be the gold tie.
Something other than green, though, for my part.
I mean, is color part of our, can we leave that open at this point, to say, put it whatever color you'd like?
Well.
Because it makes a difference to me.
This is stage one, so.
Yeah, they're coming back.
They have to come back for stage two at that time.
They can come back with options.
You can just approve the design, the general site planning, building layout, all that.
Is it?
I'm not in favor of it, and Mr. Weaver's comments start to make a lot of sense to me, the more I think about it, but whatever the council decides to do.
And I hope more USC students, if you're a class, that you come back for stage two. Good, bring your classmates.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I think we have direction in terms of the middle colors. I personally, just to be clear, I don't think green is the way to go, some other color. Okay.
Just for our clarification, sir, the submittal as of today?
That third option.
The third option is the one that we're going with, that way the architects have clear direction, but as I understand, the council to experiment with in time for stage two, that middle section on Wilson.
That's right.
Okay.
Roll call.
I still, I'm not clear.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I'm not clear on what.
So the third option that was presented.
If color's not important.
This one.
Why was color presented? And if we're giving them the opportunity to play around with the color, are we being unfair to them if they come up with a color that's distasteful to one or more of the?
That's why, sir, I wanted to make sure that we gave them at least something that was very concrete and definitive, but to have the flexibility per council to look at that one section. Because you're right, they would, it would be unfair to give them, basically, come back with still more options.
So if I was against the flexibility, I would have to vote no on that, then?
You could, I suppose.
Okay, just so I'm clear on that.
If I may, I just need to understand.
There is the second stage, so regardless of what the architect comes up with on that middle color, we still have the final decision on the middle color.
If I understood the council direction, you want, you wanted to approve the third version that was presented by the architect, as the city manager said, but the caveat for the middle section on Wilson was to identify ways to distinguish and break down the building in the middle section, and that could include color, but not necessarily limited to color? Would that be the appropriate way to go at it?
Well, I don't know. I mean, I think that the building is fine, I just think that somewhere between doing a bright green and doing what I, to my eye, looked like charcoal, there's some color there that won't be objectionable, that won't be startling, but that's still a color that serves to distinguish that section, make it pop a little bit, as compared to the rest of the side of the building.
Again, what we're taking away is that the council approve the, is approving the version that was submitted today by the architect, that that really kind of blends, a little more conservative on the orange, a little more pop on the brand, and we have that one section on Wilson that is still somewhat of an open question. What is here is a great starting point, but that we can experiment a bit more, something that's a little more eye-catching. That's what I've taken away from at least three of you.
You understand, Mr. Jari?
Were you talking about a hotel, Mr. Weaver, at that corner? Was that what you were saying, was it be good?
Yes, I'm willing to wait to get it, first class.
I understand what everyone's saying, and it's not where I want to go at this point, so.
All right, well, we have. We have a motion and a second. Roll call. Councilmembers, Friedman?
Yes.
Manukian?
Yes.
Jari?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
All right, we will now proceed to stage two. What's next, Mr. Kazaziyan? Motion to adjourn, and followed by the reading of the closed session items for council.
So, second.
We are adjourned. Could you read the closed?